And if you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kiri, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmembers Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Philkins.
Here. Thank you. At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment to add item V1D under the City Manager's Report.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda with the amended, added B1D under City Manager's Report.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward that you do state your name for the clerk. It would be very much appreciated. And keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name's Amanda Sigginz, and I'm here as a concerned citizen and as a parent. Obviously, I have lills. If any of you haven't been able to hear them yet so far, I think we're doing all right. There is some concern amongst some of my friends who are parents that have kids at Lincoln and at Franklin. There is two intersections, Lester and Simpson at Franklin Elementary and Ayer and Wheeler, where citizens are parking on the streets along the car line pickup where parents are parking along the intersections to pick up their kids. And some of the residents have been asked to not park there because when they park there along the side of the street, the parents then have to block the driving lane and then go around them. And at Lincoln, I know the Clam Lake River, there's like a walkway there, and it's just a super short block. I think there's only one trailer there. And so, you know, there's such a short space where there's, you know, a bunch of traffic of vehicles going opposite ways, and then the parents parking along the street. And when I was sitting there, one of the times to pick up my kids, there were parents going into the driving lane to go around this truck, and the truck coming in the opposite way couldn't see that a mom in her stroller with her child was crossing, and they couldn't see them because of all the congestion of the vehicles, and they almost ran into them. And so, as a concerned parent, I'm here to ask that the city look into putting daytime no parking signs along these intersections by the schools. And there's also another intersection that has been brought to my attention where just a few days ago, a school bus was hit with children on it here in town on Division...
Leeson.
...and Leeson. And I have a picture of the accident here, and I'll leave all the screenshots here. And it's just a little concerning because the owner of the property where the truck went into her yard has asked for a sign there for a four-way stop because it's very confusing, especially when there's school buses and all kinds of stuff going through there. And they haven't put a sign up there yet. And I know the school has asked this person specifically, it's, there's a few vehicles parking there. They've asked for them to not park there, and they keep parking there despite the fact that it's dangerous. And we've asked for signs to be put there before, and they've been denied. And so, I feel like at this point, it becomes, you know, a question of accountability. So, if something was to happen, who's going to be responsible for that? And as a parent, I would be devastated if my child was hit there, and I don't think that anyone else, you know, would like for their children to be hurt.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of your three minutes.
Yep, can I?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Howard Hooker, and I live on 135 West Brimmer Street. And I'm going to make this really short and quick. I got a real serious flooding, or I got a real serious problem with flooding and sewer in my yard. It's really serious. And it's flooded out my car. Everything I own's flooded out. I mean, I get four, you know, I get two foot of water in my backyard every time it rains. I'm gonna see what's gonna happen tonight through this rain here. My foundation on my house is all gone out from this water. The house next door is about ready to tip over, so there's something. Whatever happened on Brimmer Street, ever since Brimmer Street's been done, there's a real problem. And it's not just because I live at the bottom of a hill. That's not the reason. I live in a bad sinkhole. So, I have a lot of sewer issues in my backyard that has to do with the city. And it's flooded my house out, and then the sewer comes up, and then I deal with flies. And it's just awful. I can hardly live in my house because of the state because the sewer gets so bad. And then, I just bought this place last fall, and it's happened every time it's rained, I mean, since June. As soon as Brimmer Street's got done, I get a flood in my yard. And the first thing, I didn't know it was bad because it recited quicker, but my car was already flooded then. And I only have a lot that's 25 feet wide by 144 foot, so you can imagine. I got no driveway no more since Brimmer Street. I got nothing. So, I ain't even got a yard to park in because of this water issue. Well, what they did last year when they put this Brimmer Street in, apparently they put a new water line in, okay? Well, is what they did is they turned the water on to this house, okay? With it unoccupied. So, whoever did the water, you know, put the water meter in, redid the water line on Brimmer Street there and turned the water on. So, underneath this little house I bought, thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of gallons of water was leaking under it when I bought it, which I didn't really realize it. I went to the city, I went to put the water in my name. The city said, oh, there's a lien on the house for a $250 water bill. Well, Lakeside Title said there wasn't no lien on it. Well, I got my water shut off because of it too, you know? So, you know, and so, I finally got the water bill paid after it was shut off and the reconnect fee, and then they finally put it in my name. Well, when they come and put it in my name, I took off for the weekend. I didn't use no water. They said I already used five clicks or three clicks. Now, I use 3,000 gallons of water again because again, you know, the water was, you know, there was a leak under my house, but the water was already on because a friend of mine, Jim Prey, works for the Water Department, and he said, Howard, the water's already been on. So, this leak under my house been going on and going on and going on, which my problem is, all my stuff's flooded out. I don't know what to do about the foundation of my house. It's just fell in. When the water comes in, I gotta smell the sewer and the flies for weeks because it's just seriously bad. And if you go four foot below my backyard, you got water sitting forever. I mean, you just take a four-foot hole, and the water never leaves. So, there's really a leaking problem or a sewer problem or a water problem. I got videos, the water's this deep when it rains, and it just, it just comes right down Brimmer and just goes right in my house. I got my daughter, and the water's that deep. I can't even, you know, so I just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
It's a real problem, and it really disappoints me. And I've had, I've had engineers there. They say maybe a sewer didn't get capped. I got a hole this big in front of my house and this deep, and next door too just coming right in. And I've had these guys look at it like, oh, yeah. Well, I don't know, but it's a really very serious problem. And being so close to the lake, I don't think we need the sewer going in my backyard. And I got neighbors that have little children, and it's just sewer and stinks.
Howard, that's the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Serious problem, that's all.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting on the 7th of September.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Marcus, the next thing on our agenda is a FOIA appeal, so I'll turn it to you and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We have a FOIA appeal this evening from Mr. Bowdery with respect to the request for the waiver of a fee. The city attorney will provide a brief explanation regarding the circumstances being asked with respect to the waiver of the fee as well as our recommendation. Following that, it would be an opportunity, if council so desires, to provide, Mr. Bowdery with an opportunity to address the City Council. Following that, certainly any questions or discussion by council prior to making your final consideration regarding the appeal would be appropriate. So, Mike, if I could kick it to you.
Sure. So, we provided the city a memo on this issue. I suspect that you've received it all. This is a fee appeal. Basically, it's broken down into three different sections, if you will. One is that the city failed to identify the nature of the high costs to charge time for the search, that the city cannot require that the fees be paid upfront after a request is granted, and the city must fulfill the request by delivering the documents before the fee can be applied. Hopefully, you've read that email. We don't believe, at least in our opinion, that there's merit to any of the grounds raised for the appeal. Certainly, the city has the authority and the ability to waive those fees if it desires, but, you know, this is often the case where we have individuals who request public records and for whatever purpose they want to use those for. And without charging the fee, that simply means that staff time and other public resources, tax dollars are used to fulfill those requests for what essentially may be some other purpose or private purpose for that. So, we made a recommendation in that memo, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay.
And the recommendation was to not grant it.
To deny it, to deny it. Okay, Mr. Bowdery, is he here? Okay, would you like to say anything? You have to come up to the podium if you do, and your time will be limited to six minutes, please.
I would like to ask how the city could find no merit in the first section you cited. The law specifically states that the nature of the high costs, and in this instance, the high cost is $28. The city gave me an itemized deduction form. That form has a specific spot so that you can follow the law and identify the nature of those circumstances in which the city has found that there are high costs that are unreasonable. And the city failed to fill out that portion of the itemized deduction or detailed itemization form.
Okay, this period of time is just for you to share your thoughts. There won't be any discussion with you.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks. Okay, does anybody have any questions? And if not, if so, what would they be? And if not, you can make a motion.
What, to what was he referring about something not filled out? Because I didn't notice in the communication we got, I didn't see anything like that.
So, there is a fee schedule. It was part of the, I believe, the documents that you received as well. The actual cost was $27.81, and those charges were filled out under the labor section of that, of that fee schedule.
So, was there a section that was not filled out, as he stated? I didn't see one.
No.
And he'll tell me.
I'm not sure which section he's referring to. At least the copy that I have, the copy that you have, shows that amount that was filled out for the labor charges indicating $27.81 for the hourly wage of 1,854 and total time 1.5 hours.
Okay. Mr. Bowdery, you're out of order.
There are, if I may, there are other sections within the form. The form is a catch-all form, not all portions of that form we would be filling out, so.
Okay. Just the ones that are...
Relevant.
Relevant to the thing, okay. And the number of hours and the rate per hour is on that form and stated, and it comes to the 27.
Right. It's basically a calculator.
Yeah, okay.
And this is another part that you're... And it was part of all the exhibits that were transmitted to council.
Right. I think what, what's important to understand is that when a FOIA request is made, the documents have to be looked over to make sure there is nothing on them that needs to be redacted. And it takes time, and staff time costs taxpayers money. And so, when you request information, when a citizen requests information, you have a right to that information, but you also have a responsibility to cover the cost of obtaining that information. And because of that, I move to deny the appeal.
I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. All right, so, Kiri, we have several communications this evening. Would you like to do those for us?
Sure, we do. We have a request from the Cadillac High School to approve the parade route for the homecoming that's coming up on October 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route for the Cadillac High School Homecoming Parade as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Yay, homecoming parade.
The second thing that we have to come before you is, United Way is requesting to hang a banner from September 27th till October 18th for their United Way campaign for the 2021.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from September 27th, 2021 to October 18th, 2021 for the United Ways, Celebrate United Way Campaign.
I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And the last thing to come before you is a request from the Roaring 20 Saloon to have a sidewalk cafe in front of their business in 2021.
Nice. See people standing outside there all the time, so it'd be nice to have a place to sit down.
Well, I have a question in that regard. When I saw this request, I think it's wonderful that they're going to do it, but right now, they use, currently use that space to go outside and smoke. And if we approve this to be an outdoor seating, eating area, they wouldn't be able to do that. Is that correct?
I am not 100% as to what the Michigan smoking law says, unless Mike knows it off the top of his head. But assuming you're right, that you can't sit and smoke in an outdoor cafe, then that is correct.
Okay.
Folks that would be otherwise smoking on a bench, if that's now where they're going to have outdoor dining, would not be able to do it.
Right, so I would just want to make sure that they understand that, so. But I think it's great that they're going to do it.
Did anybody make a motion yet?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Roaring 20 Saloon to have a sidewalk cafe in front of their business in 2021, subject to the conditions noted.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Kiri. And that takes us to the City Manager's Report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item this evening is a request regarding the acquisition of a stand-on leafblower. The Maple Hill Cemetery Board recently passed a motion at their meeting to recommend the purchase of an additional stand-on leafblower that'll help them with specifically fall cleanup operations. After discussion with the board, it was determined that the cost of the blower will ultimately be split between cemetery operating budgets and the budget for the Parks Department and the General Fund, which will also allow that blower to be deployed on a more flexible basis to other areas and operations throughout the city. Attached to the communication that was in your public agenda packet this evening is the detail from the bids that just recently were solicited and came out. The last time we did this in the company, Ellen's Equipment has offered to hold that pricing the same at $9,351, and that is the recommendation this evening, to acquire another stand-up leafblower from Ellen's Equipment in that amount with funds being available in our cemetery operating fund and our Parks Department or the General Fund.
It's good to see a local business that we're able to do business with. It's great.
Yeah, it's badly needed with, we have one up there, another one. With two, you can do the work of what four people used to do with push lowers. So, it seems like a lot of money, but it's a nice unit. As a comparison, Traverse City Cemetery has three of them for the same-sized cemetery. So, it's, like I said, it sounds expensive, but it's well worth it.
You're gonna make the motion?
I'll make that motion. I make a motion to award the purchase of an additional stand-on leafblower to Ellen's Equipment of McMinn, Michigan, in the amount of $9,531.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is an update regarding an emergency purchase. As City Council Mayor may not realize, just before the last City Council meeting, there was a tremendous rainstorm that hit our community, as the gentleman earlier this evening was talking about regarding the flooding off of Brimmer Street. That rainstorm took out our broadcasting equipment that allows for Cadillac Community Television to broadcast live meetings from this location. Well, the fix has been made through the emergency purchase that we made in the amount of $9,250 to bring the electronics back to life again. It should hold us hopefully for quite a while. My understanding is that we're live this evening, and we are now also live streaming, as I believe to be the case as well, off of CCTV website too, which is something that we were able to do on rare occasion live. Typically, everything we were doing was just replaying or downloading. So, if you wanted to download something a day or two later, you could do that. But now, you're able to see it live, even if you don't have a cable TV service.
That's great.
Required by charter to report out accordingly. And no action needed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving, moving along, Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item under the Manager's Report is a recommendation regarding approval of a contract for services with the Alliance for Economic Success. The council communication in the public agenda packet this evening essentially frames the discussion that was started, at least relatively recently, in terms of a public appearance from Alliance for Economic Success board members and stakeholders, where they came to City Council about a month or so ago, actually at your August 2nd meeting, to talk about their efforts in reshaping their organization, bringing on an executive director, restructuring themselves to be similar to the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance with their partnerships with Michigan State University this evening. I would like to introduce, I believe, Mark to come up, who's gonna give a presentation in terms of a status update as to where they are. We also have in the council agenda packets a copy of the proposal that they had sent to us with respect to contractual services for their agreement. Mark?
Thank you. I'll probably refer to a couple of the other people here with us, but I'll just get it started here. I think you saw, hopefully, the PowerPoint that we put together, but if not, I'm gonna give you copies now just to give you a quick look.
At what we've been doing in terms of our partnerships in the past month. I got great, thank you.
We've really, as Marcus said, the NLEA board, which I served on for a number of years, has a model in place to collaboratively work with units of government, work with economic development for the communities up in the Potaski and Charlevoix region. And they use this model where the Michigan State University Extension, it's called the Community Food and Environment Institute. They hire the full-time director for NLEA. That position is then funded by both, by counties and cities, by government entities, by public support from, from business and industry, and through grants and other, so it's a multiple funded, multiple funding sources. But it's really important that the units of government get involved in that, in that funding as well, because that gives them not only a say about what is happening in economic develop, through a position on that board that we will have, but it also gives them the opportunity to, to take advantage of economic development that can help their community. So, you can see there what we've put together on, on the first two slides, you know, Michigan State University, Baker College, Alliance, and the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce. We have all partnered together. All of this work has been done, and, and the idea is that we can collaboratively work better and get more done to grow our economy, et cetera. So, really, we're gonna maximize our resources of all of our agencies. We're gonna work together in one location at Baker College, which we'll show you, so we can address a lot of the things that will help this community improve, whether it be broadband or place making or workforce or so many different things. They're listed there, all the associated challenges of economy in a community, the bottom bullet there, you know, infrastructure, childcare, corridor. AES has already helped implement a couple of corridor studies, as you know. So, anyway, we're gonna leverage resources. MSU, looking at the third page there, MSU Extension, you can see what their focus has been, you're all familiar with them, but they, they will be involved, obviously. We have an agreement with them. Baker College, it's pretty amazing that we have a four-year college in Cadillac that is so community-involved. AES has been here working hard for four years already, prior to that, in the Manistee area, and the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce. So, these are the partners, and, and we have memorandums in place with these partners between the Cadillac Chamber. There's a memorandum that we're gonna work on these things together. Caitlin Barrett is here, could speak to that. Baker College giving 1,900 square feet of office space for MSU to reside at no cost, and, and so, we have that agreement in place. And we are advertising this month for an executive director position that we will then fill in October. This is a hire by MSU. MSU hires this person to be the director of AES. We have a shared funding then. MSU pays 40%, we pay 60%. So, we are raising funds to finance that full-time person to do this work that will support our community. So, we're talking to units of government to try to get that accomplished. If, and that's really, that, that's the big picture, I think. They will have separate leadership still, but they still will, we are creating an advisory committee that will meet quarterly. We're also adding people to our executive board, which is represented here tonight by Jeremy Winkle and Kelly Smith, Jeremy now the chair. So, we are asking you to help fund this, and we are asking you to nominate someone either from the council or at your choice, to serve on our executive committee, to give us input on a monthly basis on what the needs are for the city. And we'll do the same with the counties, Wexford and Mesaki Counties. You can see there, you know, there's been a significant investment already. That's the only other thing I'd like to say. In the last three years, private investment of more than $100,000 in getting AES off the ground here in, in this region, as it moved over from Manistee and really put its feet down here with Lisa Liddy as the executive director. Lisa has now moved on to a different position. I'm just helping coordinate all this. I'm actually retired. So, anyway, that's, that's, I think, the big picture. There's been a significant investment already, this, because we know it works to collaborate and partner. And, but we need, we need you to step up. We need the counties to step up. And everybody asks us, well, what are they doing? Well, I've heard that, if I had a dollar for every time I heard that, I'd be rich. Somebody has to step up first. And so, I'm actually meeting with the Finance Committee of the county on Wednesday. We're meeting with Mesaki County. So, that's the big picture. You can see who's involved, and I would like to... And I would like to turn it over to Jeremy Winkle, one of our longtime supporters and also who is now the chair of AES. So I'll just leave it, leave it there and then if they have questions, come back. Thank you.
One thing while Jeremy's going up there is Mark just misspoke. 80%
Kelly, could you please come up to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So folks at home can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Kelly Smith, I just wanted to make one, Mark was excited. The 100% for the job, MSU gets, pays 20% and then the community pays 80%. But because Baker College is giving $25,000, $25,000 a year in rent free to MSU Extension, it is now only 60% as a community that we have to
Raise.
Raise. Thank you. Sorry.
Are we on a time limit? I don't mean to take a lot of time, I just don't wanna make sure if, if I was given six minutes.
You're okay right now.
Okay, great. So a little bit of history, if I could step back a little bit. Years and years and years ago, a group of us got together and tried to figure out what economic development looked like in our community. And I guess step back a little bit, I'm Jeremy Winkle, I'm the owner and president of Vandy Home Furnishings, I'm not representing them today, but I live at 110 Cochran Drive here in Wexford County. And I think a couple of you, I know Councilman Shippers was there back at Clam Lake Township, I think the mayor was there, maybe not, but just working on this collaborative thing and what does it look like and all of us beating our heads against the wall of turfies, conversations and all that type of stuff. And we weren't getting anywhere. And at the time, Kelly Smith was serving on the AES board over in Manistee. And the group of us, I hate to say names, but Wolverine Power and the hospital and our business and our family and Baker College and some of these other people finally just said, we are not getting anywhere, we're talking to these municipalities about economic development, we're gonna fund it ourselves. And so a lot of industry in town, Cadillac Castings, Benetton, Four Winds at the time, gave money, the other funders we talked about, I'm sure I'm missing some. And we made a, actually a $50,000 commitment for three years to get this off the ground, so $150,000, 100% paid by independent people and businesses. And we said, we're gonna prove ourselves in the community. And then hopefully, the municipalities come on. Well, we started and we did the study out on Cadillac West, which I think now the, the DDA or the, the thing is up and running. We did a corridor study for the city of Cadillac, I'm not sure if you remember seeing that. We did a housing study, which I think, we would never wanna take credit for it, but the developers of the loft would say that's part of the reason that they developed the loft. The people I know it's been mentioned that are, I think, still looking at developing the property next to Willow, were somewhat brought in by that housing study. We did a restaurant study, which brought some of the people in, like Jimmy Johns into the bottom of the loft. And those are all studies, we helped write the grant for the DNR for the Wex to save the Wex. And all of these things that we're doing are free to everybody. And so have we proved value or haven't we proved value? I don't know, because it's all free. And then COVID hit. And obviously, that slowed everything down in, in an economic development world, at least this is my take on it. You kinda pivot where the money is and you pivot where the problem is. And where the problem was is all these businesses were closed in March of last year and there were these grants available, but it was a small businesses, we were being told that no one had any expertise in it, they didn't know how to apply for these restaurant grants and these PPP loans and all the stuff that they needed, we needed to survive. And so we went through a lot of time, and I, it's in that report, it's in the annual report that you provided, how many businesses that we talked to in Mesaki and Wexford County, to help facilitate that. That might be a phone call in all honesty, it might be an email, but there's some touch points there. And so now, honestly, the board is wore out and we've been leading the organization and it's been very much bored a lot. And we were, brought this concept of MSU and the Northern Lakes Development that Marcus mentioned and Mark mentioned of where they have a partnership with MSU to provide the staff. All we have to do now is, is raise the money. And so we looked at that big number and Baker College was a big part of that, where they said, you know what, we actually have some space, MSU was outgrowing the, the county facility downtown and so that helped pay a big part of it. And so now we're out raising roughly $75,000 to get this organization off the ground and pay for this person. And keep in mind, that's a bare bones, that pays for the position, space and a few other things. But if, if we're ever to move the thing forward, like Northern Lakes, I think they probably have five, six, seven, either between full-time and part-time staff, obviously a dream of ours someday. But that's what we're out selling at this point and you've heard multiple presentations. We have been meeting with Mesaki County, I think those conversations have gone well. Wexford County, I think they've gone well. We are, we were supposed to be on the agenda the last week for two of the townships, then there was a communication issue and so we weren't, but we're out talking to those two. And so I think the question always becomes, what are they gonna do and who is out supporting the organization? And so I don't wanna speak for any of them, but we're out doing it and I think it has to be a collaborative thing. We're not looking for the municipalities to pay all of it. Consumers Energy has paid this year, the hospital's paid year, our business has paid this year. And so we're gonna continue to fund it, but we're only a portion of that amount of money and we're looking for your support to do that. And so.
And regarding the funding component, it's based on the city's ad valorem taxable values. So as it is right now, that number is basically just over $7,800 a year. So hypothetically, or I shouldn't say hypothetically, but technically, as AES would bring additional economic development opportunities to the county and to our area and then specifically to the city, that incentive would then increase potentially the total ad valorem number to the community, which would then equate to additional dollars on an annual basis going to the organization. So similar to how Northern Lakes has a full-time staff, full-time planners and other economic development specialists on staff, they, you know, I don't, they didn't get there all in one day, it took time for them to build to that, to that level. And so the incentive is to try to
We tried to make it fair, cause I mean, what should Cherry Grove Township pay, what should Haring pay, what should Mesaki County pay, what should Wexford? And with it being a taxable value, that's one deterrent to say, how big are you? And so we could argue, should it be, you know, .0015, should it be .0012, you know, what should that amount be? And I honestly believe that all the municipalities might not support us at that level or even might be higher leveled than that. But that is the baseline and that's what we're asking for and we think it's a fair amount.
And you said it was $7,800?
7,883, which is .000031 is the calculus, times the total ad valorem value, which is currently 254,297,417. So, and I'm just reading off the communication.
But I wanna be clear, if Mesaki County came to us and said, our portion is $12,101, I'm just making that number up, and it's new to our budget and we can only give you $8,000 this year, whatever that number was, we are not gonna exclude them. There might be a benefit that gets dropped or something like that, but it is not a situation where if you don't pay exactly the same amount, we're going to not take you in or disband or, or, I don't know what I'm looking for, just in case there was any, I don't wanna say hard feelings down the road. That is the calculation and that's where we wanna get. But with it being a new budget item for every municipality, we'll see what everybody tells us.
Thank you, Jeremy. You know, I know that we were having some conversation in regards to this earlier and it's really like the chicken and the egg. And, you know, as I listened tonight to Mark saying, you know, he would be a millionaire if every time somebody said, well, what is everybody else doing? And, you know, I feel pretty strongly after everything that we've heard tonight and I appreciate the history that you provided, that $7,800 is a far cry from the benefit that the city of Cadillac has seen since AES has come into the community. And I also believe, Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that is really important to our city's success as the staff works through these different projects.
Sure. Having an economic development consortium, economic development resource available locally could be very helpful in terms of, you know, assisting in, in a lot of the legwork, filling out applications, finding things that are out there that we're not necessarily in tune to, and providing, you know, resources like studies and other such things. There's, I mean, there's lots of benefits, there's lots of questions still about, you know, overall framework and structure. We're, I know we're very excited about seeing AES form under the model of NLEA with, you know, a full-time executive director as part of a much larger organization and we feel that that's gonna bring a lot of value to, to the program.
Well, and I, I think that one of the things that, you know, Steve and I were talking too, that we'd like to see is that, you know, and it's that chicken and egg thing again, you know, you haven't hired the director yet and so, you know, gosh, we'd really like to see that plan. But if you're going to have a seat for the city on the board, you know, I think that, you know, we can certainly be a part of those discussions.
And, and I've talked to Jeremy and I absolutely am supportive of a collaborative economic development effort and concern, cause AES had its challenges in the beginning. We thought there was gonna be one director coming over from Manistee and they were gone and thank goodness Lisa stepped in, but now Lisa's stepping out without that director in a position to, to tell, the donation, the contribution is a nothing. And I'm saying, from my view, the $7,800 doesn't bother me. What I'm concerned about is committing the city to a three-year contract before I have the vision of the leader that's saying, this is how we're gonna work together. And, and I think Jer knows, I am a huge supporter of getting the townships, the cities, business working together, but I think to do that and, and to be successful, we've gotta have that leadership position in place first and then, then absolutely step in at that point. But I'm concerned about doing it before we have that leadership position, to commit to a three-year contract.
So I heard that, that you expect to have the leadership position filled in October. Could this be something that we bring up once that's in place? Is that, would that make you more comfortable once there is a director?
Oh, absolutely.
And bring it up then? But I'm very much in favor of participating in this, so I don't want it to, you know, end up at the bottom of the pile, you know what I'm saying?
Be at the top.
I want it to be at the top of the pile, cause this is just the, the stuff that, the vital things that this group has done for local businesses through COVID is just remarkable. I mean, there are many communities that have not had that kind of support and I'm, I really appreciate that. And I know our local businesses do and I wanna support that as a city. And I also, I have no intention of saying, well, who else is in before we're in. I would be very much, very happy to say, to be able to have them say, well, the city's already in and take that leadership role. So, yeah, as soon as
You wanna table it for a month?
Can I say a couple of things?
Yes, just come to the podium.
One thing I forgot and then I'll answer to the question. We are not in uncharted territory here. This is happening in every other community. And I think, just so everybody understands that, if you look at Traverse City, you mentioned Traverse City in the cemetery. Traverse City, City just last month made a $50,000 commitment to their economic development that runs the chamber up there through TC Connect. And once again, there was discussion at their meeting about what did you do for me lately? But the ultimate vote was, is we're gonna give $50,000 to their economic development and so it's significant and I don't know how the size of Traverse City compares to Traverse, or to Cadillac, but it is significant. And two, you know, we asked for a three-year commitment because we're signing an agreement with MSU, but you're, if we don't prove our worth, there isn't out in there. And so all I would, and I'm fine tabling it, all I would say is, is what more information, if we hired candidate A versus candidate B, is that gonna determine how you guys vote in October without being part of the interview process and if, if, without it? And if, if it is, I understand it. If it isn't, then I just challenge you to say, if you are supportive of it, we are gonna hire somebody. We have funds to do that. Why not tonight?
And I would say, Jer, my only concern, again, concern being close for it, is having that key person in who can answer the questions of what our direction is, how things are gonna be handled, et cetera, from that leadership point, I think is key.
But I would, I would say that we're, pick a timeframe, 60, 90, 120 days away from that director being in the position, knowing exactly what we've been through and being able to come back to you and speak intelligently about the position. So I'm not sure we're talking about October.
Right.
To answer your questions, you, you know how a new hire works. And is that person gonna be trained, up to date, all that type of stuff, to come back and ask for money? Cause we do need money sooner than later. I mean, the private businesses have done it for long enough and they will continue to do it, as far as I know. But like I said, I'm not challenging you, but I'm also asking, you know, what more would you need to know then? And would you be able to get that information based on the circumstances that we're talking about tonight?
Okay, something that, that I know now is the quality of individuals who are on this committee and the people that would be responsible for hiring someone, I have every confidence that you're going to find a perfect candidate and somebody who is going to be able to serve this community and this organization. Well, I, I don't think anybody on this committee is gonna just hire a hack.
Are you gonna interview this person or I thought you said Michigan State was gonna hire him?
My, the way it's set up right now is that there's a committee to hire this person. What?
I'm thinking MSU or your committee.
Two people from MSU, one being Sherri Spelman from the local MSU director, even though they don't, she has no oversight of this position. It's through the economic whatever, doesn't sound like that should go through that division, but it goes through that division. So whoever's in charge of that division, Sherri, Kelly Smith from Baker College, and then Caitlin from the chamber are the four people that will be sitting down to hire the person as I know it today. And Mark will be part of that.
And also David M. O., who is the current director of NLEA.
Okay, I'm sorry. And Dave will, from up in Charlevoix.
And I think you're right, they're all good people.
They're all good people and you're gonna find
And what we're told, cause the, the director at NLDA recently retired. And because of, they don't, this position is, my understanding, doesn't pay great, it pays good, but the benefits that come with the position are outstanding. And so the quality of applicant they get for this with, cause they're a full Michigan State employee. The, the benefits that they get, the time off, all the perks, all the stuff that goes along with it, is significant and they don't have any fear of not getting a very, very deep list of candidates.
If I, don't go too far. If I may, just for discussion purposes, mayor, members of the city council, throw out a couple of options maybe to help, just with further conversation. Maybe we could look at an adjustment to the effective date. If what the executive board needs is some form of a commitment, perhaps we push the effectiveness date of the implementation of the agreement, so you could still take care of the business today, make it effective January 1, 2022 type of thing. If that helps provide some comfort with them, maybe an out that, you know, if, or if we choose to, and Mike, maybe you need to chime in, you know, to pull the strings or something if we hear something we don't like. I would assume that within the next 30 to 60 days, we would, we would know who the new hire is and could send and share a bio and whatnot to city council, knowing that, again, the policy direction is still gonna come from the executive board that's made up of the local stakeholders. And perhaps that's enough to keep council somewhat comfortable while being committed to knowing that this is the direction we like to go. Still gives a little bit of some flexibility with city council, should we see something we don't like, we can pull the plug on it.
So what would we My concern with that, again, it's my fiscal side of committing the city to a contract that we don't know the, the true parameters of direction of it at the time that we commit. And, and again, I support this wholeheartedly, but I also need to know who's leading it and what their vision and leading it is and I'll jump right on board with it. And we always hope for the best, but you have to plan for the worst. And if we're spending government money on a three-year contract, that's my pause. If Jer comes to me for my business, I can articulate what I need to see for my business, I can articulate exactly what I think needs to be done. We don't quite have that yet going to the municipal contracts. And, and that's my hesitation.
I'm gonna say, you know, thank you, Jeremy. I think when you asked the question whether you provide value, I think the answer is definitely yes. You know, the corridor study I saw study I saw, the housing study, you know, I know how much that helped. The restaurant study, I wasn't quite as aware of. But, you know, I, the number of restaurants we've seen, I've definitely been pleased with. I, I don't have the same reservations. I think you have proved your worth. And I'm going to, if you guys want to make a motion to table afterwards, if this doesn't work, I'm going to make a motion to pass this, the three-year contract for the point zero 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 three one, you know, equivalent mills. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. I'm going to make the motion to approve the contract for services with the Alliance for Economic Success as presented.
I support that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And then the, the logistics of getting your representatives and stuff like that. Something you guys are going to have to figure out.
Well, I was going to say, if we could pause for just a moment, Mayor, members of the City Council, there was a request as presented this evening for a volunteer to come.
Yes.
We can handle that now, or we can bring that back as a future agenda item?
Well, I'd be happy to do that now. And I would like to ask Councilmember King if you would be willing to do it.
I would, I would second that request.
I think that would be great.
I, I will say, I, I thank you. That's very kind. I don't want to do it at this point. Jer knows I'll support him through this, but at this point I'm-
Please turn to your right.
All right.
We need somebody.
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
And so-
If somebody, do we vote on it?
Yes.
Yes. So if somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll move to have Mayor Philkins be our representative on the board.
I'd second that.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still think Steve would-
I think you would have been great on that. Okay. All your fears leave.
Mayor, we have one more item, the one that we added this evening.
Yep.
Right.
This is, let me just pull it up.
The bricks.
Yes, thank you. This is a request with respect to the bricks for the Shea locomotive site through the Cadillac Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class. Just a, a quick reminder, the city agreed to be the facilitator for the Chamber of Commerce Leader, facilitator, fiduciary for the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class. Several months ago, they're, they're doing the Shea showcase as their annual project. Also, as a part of that, we have received all of the funds that they've raised for that. But because of that, that doesn't mean that we can just simply go around our, our purchasing procedures and policies. That being said, they have selected a vendor to use for the bricks, for the laying and acquisition of the, the special bricks for that project with a company called Brick Make, Brick Markers USA. Thirteen thousand and fifty-two dollars are on deposit with us. Accordingly, that's the amount of the contract with that company. The request would be that we waive bidding and then award the contract accordingly to the company that the Chamber and the Leadership Class have selected for this. This is a, a component of their project that's outside of the work that their general contractor is doing. So I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of engraved bricks for the Shea Showcase Project.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Second, and we got a second request. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of engraved bricks from Brick Markers USA for the Shea Showcase Project in the amount of thirteen thousand fifty-two dollars.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. As we're nearing the end of our, our regular agenda, Mayor, members of the City Council, this next request is to set a public hearing for October eighteenth. This is in regard to the transfer of real property, which in this case is, is well property. And this is with respect to a well that is adjacent to the cogeneration plant. There was a contract that was put in place with that facility and the city back in nineteen ninety-four. Frankly, before I even knew Cadillac existed, I was just out of high school. And so, per that contract, which expires on Halloween of twenty twenty-one of all dates, the city is to transfer that property as of that, as of that date. I have some fun facts, just to throw them out here. I got from the Utilities Department, that the power plant uses between eight to thirteen million gallons of water a month. We receive currently electricity complimentary from them to specifically run that, that well. We have a city worker that does spend about five hours a week maintaining that well, which will be nice to claim some of that time back and, and have them doing other activities. All of the, the sewer generated from that does get discharged to the city sewer, which of course, we do charge a normal rate. However, per the agreement, the rate for water is only charged at point oh seven per hundred cubic feet. And why this is important to mention is because right now, over time, the water rate to all of our citizens and everyone else is a dollar seventy-one per hundred cubic feet. So the fact that this is transferring out of our property and to them is, is frankly, a, a good thing. At least that's how we're, we're looking at it, as a good thing. So the recommendation again this evening is to set the public hearing for October eighteenth. If there's any questions that you have, our Utilities Director is here this evening. And certainly, if you have questions that come up over time, you can email me and/or Jeff, and I'm happy to, happy to get them addressed as best as possible. So.
Is, just because this is part of the L D F N, I know there's a lot of moving parts to that. Have we gotten whatever, do we need EPA approval for this? That is part of the, is this part of our shutdown? Just so we know, we're doing what we need to do.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need anything from E P on this. This was just a well that was installed to supply them with water. And as Marcus said, we get the electricity for free. So we don't have that big bill, which is the biggest bill we have in our water plant.
Okay. So there's no other obligations that we have as part of the-
No.
Okay.
It's going to still operate, correct?
They'll operate it themselves.
Okay.
It's not shut down.
Awesome. Would someone like to make that motion? Sure. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve transfer of real property, well property, to Beaver, Michigan, and set a public hearing for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, as part of our packet, we did have the minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting, along with the Downtown Develop, Development Authority. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for our second public comment. Same as the first, if you state your name. And you have three minutes to comment.
I'm, excuse me. I'm Glenn Kangus of twenty-four twenty North Boulevard Cadillac, Michigan. I came here tonight to make a statement concerning the temporary sign revisement. I'm going to read from the paper I prepared at home, if it's okay. Due to the fact that my freedom of speech is going to be taken away by the city of Cadillac enforcing a past temporary sign ordinance, which contains a size limitation of two by two. I just want to inform you that many people have approached me and thanked me for letting Northern Michigan know what's going on in America and it concerns the city of Cadillac. This Biden, who has caused the death of thirteen fine service people, men and women, is destroying the country. And I've listed seven items that's leading to our demise. And it, and all these seven items are connected to other things like inflation, economy, and defunding of the police, and a whole bunch of other stuff. The seven items that he's got us in jeopardy are the southern border, Afghanistan, police authority is gone, crime is at a rampant everywhere, COVID nineteen is all mixed up, and China is infiltrating the country. And the Black Lives Matter are writing their emblems on streets and everywhere. Many of my signs wording have been stated on Fox News, and the majority of people in Wexford County like me and my signs, like my signs, and don't want these illegal migrants to come to live here. And I've been, I've been approached in restaurants and bars, and people have came to my house and thanked me and gave me the thumbs up and everything. Thousands of people, I think, have, have said my signs are really telling the truth for Northern Michigan. Nobody else is doing it, they say. My, and I'd just like to say, by this two by two sign being established, my First Amendment freedom of speech is gone.
Thank you.
Trail Botery for Six Stimson. I just find it funny, pretty cool, that Jeremy and all those guys get all the, the dialogue and the back and forth. But when it's someone who's just trying to, you know, get some records without being forced to pay a fee upfront, which in the city policy actually contradicts the statutory law, which is FOIA, doesn't get any and is not applied, or is not allowed to and is out of order. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Howard Hooker. And I want to thank you all for listening. And I have a very, very serious problem on Bremer and Lake Street. So, and it's, it's very important to me. I live there and it's the only place in Cadillac that has this issue, you know? And it's not because I bought a low spot in town. And I've had city guys say, oh, you shouldn't have bought a place at the Bob Hill. Doesn't have nothing to do with sewer. I just, I have to emphasize it because it's sewer, it's going into our lake. It's four foot on my property, and it's going in the streets and everywhere else. So there's a very, very serious problem with whatever's going on at Bremer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
We'll walk up spotlight and all. Caitlin with the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to say thank you for your continued investment in both the Alliance for Economic Success, but also in our partnerships. There is a four-legged table in this community, which is super rare, with the city, the Visitors Bureau, the Chamber, and this Economic Development Alliance. And each one of the representatives that represent this table have economic development degrees and urban planning certifications. To have this person be part of that strategic table is really important to us. And your participation in making sure that right person is at the table, we greatly appreciate. The application is open until the end of the month. But know that the other three at that table are making sure that the right person goes there, so that we can all together attract the employment and future employers that will live, work, and play here full-time. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening.
Couple of remarks, Mayor, members of the City Council. We will ask our traffic engineer that's a part of the firm that provides us with service to take a peek at the Lincoln School area, as well as the Leeson Division area. I do know that, you know, Division Street would be considered more of a thoroughfare, not a local road. And it's one of the reasons why traffic on Division doesn't stop. The warrants would likely not show that turning that into a four-way stop would be safe. With that being said, I'm not a traffic engineer, and that's why we use people like that to, to, to take a look to see what would be appropriate to do in that location, if anything. I can also certainly sympathize with the Lincoln School area and the traffic area, living in the neck of the woods where Kenwood Elementary used to be when it operated that way. You'd have traffic backed up for several blocks along the local streets. It's just, it's part of the, the sort of dirty details when there's school pickup and school drop-off. There just simply isn't the off-street space for vehicular traffic to go for children that are not walking or riding the, the school buses. But that, you know, being said, again, we'll, we'll take a look at it to see if there's any modicum of improvements and certainly be in communication accordingly with, with CAPS if there is something that it looks like can be changed. And, and CAPS may too have an idea as well, how, how any of that could, could be improved. Also wanted to mention with respect to the resident that came in regarding the flooding issues on Bremer Street, we're, we're certainly very well aware. In fact, an insurance claim form for damages was picked up from the city accordingly. We haven't yet received it back, but we certainly would anticipate getting, getting that form back so it can be processed as well. But our Utilities Department and Engineering is, is certainly aware. We, we were out ourselves during that tremendous storm event that took place and witnessed the flooding that was happening. And not just in that area, but in other areas. It was at a point where the storm system was so supercharged that lid covers, you know, were blowing off the tops in, in places, at the top of the hill even. So, you know, it was, it was quite, quite an event. And I believe that concludes my remarks. I was just going to say, I will ask the A E S group if, when they do have whom their new director will be, you know, a bio, some information to send us a packet, so I can share it accordingly with everyone, just to, just to keep everyone up to speed as to their developments in that accord.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm quiet tonight.
You do?
I have anything to say about T I.
Yeah, I just, I, I know we say this a lot, but with public comments, and the public comments part of our meeting, we do not interact because what's been shown is that when that happens, there are places that they do that because, and, and it can be very intimidating to someone who is public speaking. If I come back at you with comments or whatever about that at that time, it, it, it's just, it's, it's, it's a way to respect people during public comments. And during a, a specific, that's why it's three minutes of public comments. But at a specific hearing issue, it, that you had six minutes to address that. And with the thing that, where Jeremy was able to speak, that was something where we were asking for information from them. We had all the information that we needed about FOIA request that had already been presented to us. So I just wanted to explain that.
For their clarification.
Yeah. We're not, we're not picking sides. We're trying to maintain a specific policy. Okay? And then that school's back in session. Drive carefully. And oh, boy, we're going to have a homecoming parade.
Steve or Rob? No?
As I say, I did hear no, no fireworks, though, because the gentleman that would be responsible for doing them just had knee, knee replacement surgery and was concerned may not be able to run away from the fuse.
That could be a problem.
But I did, I did bring that up for, for, for purposes, just to remind council that otherwise, we would have asked City Council to approve fireworks as a technicality. One of those things that we- One of those things that we'd like to bring back to council at some point in the future would be to allow for the administrative approval of that, those types of fireworks on days other than federal holidays, so.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.